The safety message, I'll just repeat this one, I got it in the mail again today, I love this every year, it reminds me, call Digger's Hotline before you do anything. And I know once that, I thought there was nothing, and there technically wasn't, it was a deadline, but I didn't know that for sure, and it might have been a lie, they just cut it on both ends and then they don't pick it out of the middle of your claw or fash. Anyways, it's a good thing to do.
As a note, for real reason to do that, there's some undocumented wires in the ground in various places of the city, that, um, just, you always need to call.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I know.
Great.
So our first order of business is presentation discussion, discussion of updated fiscal 2015 operating budget for funds 10 and 27. And that will be Dr. Pennington. I will follow that up. Mr. Pennington?
What I'm doing is I'm passing out an updated version.
Is this what you said?
Here I was telling Greg to turn his microphone on, and I get that right after that. Passing out an updated version of the presentation that was made last week.
Okay.
In between last week and this week, two major things have happened, we can skim through, but we'll get to the dollars, we'll go over the first part, just skip over it. Two things that have happened since our last meeting, number one, on October 15th, we received our revised revenue caps, which affected both our aid and our taxing capability, we'll go over that in detail as we go along. Secondly, as you recall at the previous board meeting, there was a million seven that had not been assigned before the board meeting, that was in other, that was approved by the board, and those changes have been put into these numbers to be as current as we possibly can, and I will highlight where those numbers have changed too. So there were some changes, the changes aren't really a lot, so if you would just, we'll start out with this page here, the updated total revenue page. If you could slide one more to Deb, although she'll get it electronically later. We start out with the pages with the numbers on it, the total revenue for the year 1516 didn't change, 13.1 million, again, it was a .4% decrease from the prior year. On the next page, we have the breakout of the revenues, and what happened with our adjustment for the final certified numbers, it was basically a non-event, I mean, a number sounds high, if we found it on the ground, we'd pick it up, but in general terms of the overall budget, we had a change, a net change of $66,000 about, which is six one-hundredths of one percent, virtually a non-event. The thing that happened is our local sources, which includes property tax, that number went up 83,000 about, the state sources went down about 17,000. A net gain of taxing capability of 66,253, which represents our share, if you want to call it that, or students in our district that took vouchers to go to private schools, we get that money back in the form of being able to add that to our tax levy capability. So of the hundred, again, 113,130,384, there was only a net change of 66,000. And again, I'm pretty much treating that as a net event, or a non-event, because again, we're just changing things by six one-hundredths of one percent. The next page, the colored pie chart, only numbers that changed, and it was a small number again, local went from 24.2% to 24.3, go down two to the green, the state was 60, is at 66.2, was 66.3 when I presented it before, everything else remained the same. Our expenses, again, because we presented a balanced budget last time, are 113.1 million, the same number. If you turn to the next page, the expenses by group, if you recall, we had the 1.7 million in the other classification, after the board-approved items were placed where they belonged, they changed the other numbers on top of that as well, not by a lot though. Well, I guess, I guess you could, I think it just changed overall 1%, but spread out between the four. The salary expense is now 15, 59.7, it was 59.1. Benefits is 18.6, it was 18.4. Purchase services, 13.7, was up a tenth from 13.6, and the capital was up a tenth from 2.5 to 2.6. The other had been 6.4, and that was the percentage that went down. Again, you can see, six tenths of the 1% that was adjusted went to salaries as, obviously, a large chunk of the 1.7 went toward salaries. If you turn the page, it's still a balanced budget, it's just that the revenues and expenses are $66,000 higher than they were before. The next page shows what I explained before about the property tax and aid, just in detail, the general aid, the 67.5 number decreased by about 17,000, the all-fund tax levy increased by about $83,000. So what does that effect have overall? If you turn the page, our increase in the mill rate went from 2.17% to 2.41%, but the mill rate only changed, and that's, that's from the adjustment, the mill rate last time, the increase, or the mill rate per thousand was 20 cents, now it's 22, and the tax levy for the $100,000 home is now $22 instead of $20, still, the increase is less than $2 per month. The overall combined revenue just changed by .1, which I think was just a stretch of a rounding last time that went away, the combined amount added a .1 too. So again, our, we have a $140 million corporation, is another way to look at this. In the summary, I've jumped ahead and did it for Tuesday, but it's the highlights of the 1516 initial draft, and it's our, it's our best estimate that we have this time, with updated, again, certified aid and tax levy amounts, we will be requesting the final budget at the next board meeting, and again, in the details on the bottom one, it shows what changed from the prior, prior board meeting. So while many numbers changed, they did not change by, by much, just $66,000 spread out amongst, in this case, 113 million. We have been able to get the budget book, will be ready tomorrow to send out to everybody, we'll send it out first electronically, and we are, we will have some printed, actually, if you want one printed, they might be ready right now, and we can get one after the meeting, and then you can have a week to look at them before the board meeting, it's just, it's a very time-consuming thing, we had some issues getting it done, but they, it should be corrected up to the point of everything we know right now. So that's where we're at currently with the budget preparation process.
Any questions? Bill?
Using $100,000, maybe for somebody to do math on their own, what is the, do you know what the average quote on a home is, 125 or what is it?
A year ago, I didn't find that out this year, a year ago, it was 118.
118.
Mm-hmm.
Hope this comes out right, if it doesn't, feel free yelling at me. I, like all the work you do, when you say it would only be in a memo, to me, that provides a editorial versus factual.
Mm-hmm.
If I tell the person paying rent, your increase will only be this much about because of my higher taxes, that might sound different than what have you, so, for what it's worth.
Take that and if it comes off wrong, I apologize, because I love all the work you do, okay? So the $66,000, is that now being spent somewhere, or is that another item on the agenda?
It was allocated along with, the 1.7 that was approved was an estimated number, when we did all our final adds and subtracts, and we knew this when it was presented last Tuesday, the number had actually gone down a little bit from less than 1.7 million. So Dr. Schulte made some adjustments from top to bottom to make sure the number that we could plug into the budget matched what the whole was. But to answer your question, yes, it's already accounted for.
Hey Rebecca, we, we passed 1.7, a new spending at the last board meeting.
Yes, with a bunch of-
You're saying your reality won't be quite 1.7, 1.6 something.
Right, if you looked at that schedule that was passed out, nearly every number was an estimated number.
Okay.
And so we've adjusted somewhat for the million seven.
So we were under the 1.7 by some amount of money.
Slightly, yes.
Okay, and now we have $66,000 more of taxing authority.
Mm-hmm.
So my question is now, let's say we were 30,000 under before, just for number, now we have $100,000 not spent yet, that we could spend if we didn't, if we, if we taxed to the max, has that $100,000 already been spent, or we, or is it, I mean?
The, the plus amount we received wasn't enough to offset the adjustments from some budgets to actual items that we were doing, so there is not any unspent numbers in the, in the budget right now.
So that 66 grand is already spent, then you're saying?
Yes.
On previous items, not part of 1.7?
It covered some of the loss, and loss if you want to call it, let's, let's do it real simple, let's say instead of 1.7, we actually had a hole of 1.5. So we had to decrease from the 1.7, 100,000, and decrease from what was presented the other night, due to our catching up with the actuals when we put the book together.
Okay.
So in effect, the 66,000 helped cover the $100,000 decrease, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Is that me?
Could I? My explanation would be that the 66,000 has been used to adjust what were previously estimated numbers, to make them more accurate, reflect what was necessary to fill those spots.
Right.
Does that make sense, Bill?
To partially adjust, yeah.
I understand now, so, all right, so administration is not needing to recommend any different-
No.
-categories to spend on Tuesday. All right, thank you.
Mark, Greg? A small concern I have is 1.7 million amount, amount of money coming forward at the end, that, and I know some adjustments, that's, that's a big amount of money we haven't accounted for along the line, and that, and now we're counting for it at the end, and that, that, to me, it's just, it's, 1.7 is found money, all of a sudden, we didn't know it was there, now it's there, are we, and I, I talked to you about this, Keith, are we a little too conservative on what we do, because that money might have changed some different things as we were going along?
Well, at the last meeting, I presented before that one, the diff, the amount was 1.3 million, and the, I've been presenting that all along.
You're right, you're right, you did.
We did have a slight adjustment of a couple hundred thousand between the 1.7 meeting and the one before, but it had been 1.3 million, I think, for maybe two or three meetings before that. So it didn't go from zero to 1.7 at the last meeting, it went from 1.3 to 1.7 at the last meeting.
I remember two meetings ago, we had the adjustment of number of employees, the amount of money for payroll was 1.3, but the increases were 1.3.
Mm-hmm.
Then we came, which pretty much left us with a couple hundred thousand that we hadn't allocated yet.
That was before the second 1.3.
Right, now the next one comes out last meeting, and, uh, I forget what happened at that one, but I, somehow, I'm just kind of, all of a sudden, seeing something come up, and it kind of disturbs me a little bit, that we didn't have the time to maybe look at it better. Uh, and I, I'm not sure what the result is, is, I don't recall it being normal.
Well, it was $400,000 that came up between the prior two meetings and the last one.
And we didn't catch the 1.3 balancing the 1.3 until we had all our figures of employees in?
Yes, but that's what created the 1.3 million additional.
It went from one area to another.
Because we also, if you remember that schedule, there were four, maybe eight things listed on the schedule that totaled to the 1.3, it wasn't just two items.
Okay.
We had the reduction of the OPEB payment, we had some savings in the computers, and other items like that.
So these are the various areas, and that's probably why we haven't seen them other years, that, to that degree?
Um, we've, we've always, we've had the pluses and minuses every year I've been here, as we go, we, I reported it to the board and the schedules every time, with the things that were known and the things that were suggested but not approved.
Okay.
And then when they were approved, for instance, the capital improvements, if there was a change, we would move it from one slide to the other.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate it, I'm comfortable with that, I just wanted to bring it out, see if anyone else had questions. So, that being said, is there any more on that subject? We'll move to item five, which is the, uh, wait a minute, we're going to four, I'm sorry, we're going to item four now, five is next, I don't know why I put a check there already. So Keith, you're up again, thank you.
Item four, the financial statements we sent out with the packet, again, it's the balance sheet that was requested by Commissioner Dahmerhausen this year. You can see our assets, liabilities, and fund balance in balance sheet form, again, a balance sheet is a snapshot as of a certain day, it can change, it's nice to see how we're doing, our assets are about the same, our liabilities are greatly reduced, and the fund balance, which is assets less liabilities, you can see is about a million and a half last, ahead of last year, part of that is due to our cash spending pattern for our variable items such as the summer maintenance. If you go to our revenues, expenses, and fund balance graphs, this is the first month, we put in the latest budget, it could change obviously before the final budget, but we wanted something to compare, we usually don't, well, we don't put in the budget numbers from July and August, so this is the first time you'll see some budget numbers, and as we set this up, based on requests from the past years, you can see how our spending is comparing both to last year and as a percent of the total amount expected to be received. To date, there are no surprises on the expenses, they're about 1.2 million less, but half of that, if not more, is just the difference in timing of some of the summer projects we had last year and this year, even though we had them approved early and are doing them, they just are not as costly as some as we had last year, and some of that is being offset by the increased wages, which would be expected. You'll see, compared to last year, most of this will hit at the end, but you'll see a decrease in the fringe benefits this year, because of the reduction, or the, basically because we overpaid on purpose last year, OPEB, we will not have an OPEB payment this year, so you'll see that line, light on down. Also, our switch from self-insured for everything to just self-insured for dental has reduced what would have been in our IBNR entry, so you'll see our year-end adjustment for incurred but not reported. You'll see some decreases in that as we go through the year, right now, it's about even, but that'll climb up because a lot of those entries were hit at the end of the year. Again, nothing major, nothing unexpected, if you go to the fund balance graph, you'll see that fiscal 16 is a solid blue line, our fund balance is higher than last year, lower than two years ago, and most importantly, for me, when I'm talking cash flow, you want to know what our cash balances are, because there are items in the fund balance that we can't spend, for instance, receivables, or its net of liabilities. So our cash is almost, and it's not identical, but in terms of this graph where the, where the sidebars go up every $5 million, it looks about identical to where it was last year for our cash. We have one major cash item that I think I major, I mentioned last time, if I did not, I'll mention it again, the receipt of our per pupil aid of about $1.5 million will not be received in March this year, it will be received in July of next year. So we actually got down to about $1,005 in cash last year, so during the end of November and the end of June, which is our lowest peaks when it comes to cash usage and cash balance, that's our longest gap between payments, we will be watching cash especially hard, and we will not be overdraft, the worst comes to worst, we may have to withhold some payments for a month or two, if that happens. That was the plan last year, we didn't have to do that, we would not withhold any necessary items such as payroll, we would have enough for things like that, but it's just something where we know is going to come, we're going to plan for it, and watch for it carefully, and manage it so that we will not have any issues. It's just a nice little new twist to everything, there's always a new twist every year. So that's where we are with the financial statements.
Questions? Bill, please.
When can we say we are done with our self-insurance incurred but not paid, whatever you call it, uh, that we can no longer have to account for potential claims on the old plan?
Well, on the, um, health pla, the health insurance plan, we are using the runoff of the amount we put into the liability last year, we are not expensing anymore for that this year.
Is there a legal timeframe when they can only make a claim on our self-funded claim, must be on the new one, is there six months a year?
That, that I don't know, but the way it's going, they, they can predict what they call a run-out report, which shows, based on history, how many, how much can be charged, we've, we've gone through three months this year, and it's gone from like, two months of a million something, 900,000, down to about 200,000. So we are anticipating that the liability we established at the end of last year will be more than enough to cover that. We are still having a reserve for the dental part of it, but it's only $100,000.
So as of now, about 200,000 is quote budgeted to be available to cover the runoff as of roughly end of September? That's what I heard you say?
No, that, that's how much was charged against our liability.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At, at the end of the year, we had a liability of, I want to say something like 1.8 million dollars.
Okay.
And it, that's balance sheet, so when the claims come in, it's already been expensed, then it'll just run off the balance sheet and not affect our bottom line.
Okay.
As long as we provide it enough.
Can new claims still be made yet on our old plan?
That, I don't-
Simply paying off claims that were made but not paid yet?
Yeah, the, the claim would have, or the item would have had to been incurred before June 30th, um, I would have to ask HR as to what the delay is for reporting, which you can report, you know, your hurt knee or whatever, and still have it fall under the coverage, that part I don't know personally.
Okay, and no, because of the new changes in the law, there's no, um, ongoing health cases that we'd still be liable for, that all goes onto the new plan, because they take the entire group without exception?
As is, yes.
Okay, so then eventually, we have the discussion of, of the amount that we had in reserves, our fund ten reserve for insurance claims, that percentage will eventually then be looked at, and I'm assuming gotten away with, because we don't ever have self-insurance, just a portion of the dental, you said, correct?
Right, and that's why we established the, the amount of $100,000 for the dental fell within the boundaries of our percentages in the fund balance policy-
Okay.
-for an annualized expectation of what the dental costs would be. If you remember, our, um, health insurance reserve was something like 2.2 million dollars last year, and we had to use that amount-
Right.
...to help us, because our ending adjustment was like 3.5 million dollars, but we adjusted just a small amount to round it to $100,000 this year for the dental.
Okay, all right.
I, I, just to follow up on that too, I, so, we had a restricted portion of the fund ten balance for self-insurance, right, you said it was 2.2 million?
Mm-hmm.
So, so were we over or under to pay out our health insurance?
We were under budgeted, and had to use the reserve to cover the remaining amounts.
So, what was, what's, what was left then? You know, if we had to go on to that restricted fund-
Right.
-that's the reserve you're talking about?
Yes.
So how much was left of that 2.2?
Virtually nothing, or maybe $100,000, I think we rounded it up to $100,000 for the dental.
Okay, so it rolled over into the, for the-
Yeah.
-dental insurance.
Right, so now that'll be kind of a-
I was hoping there'd be like an extra million dollars.
Yeah.
There's not.
I was too.
Okay, thank you.
So I would ask if the committee would like to-
Move a financial summary to the full board. Okay, we have a, a statement to move our, uh, financial summary to the full board, and a second, do you have both of them who did it? Okay, are there any other, any more conversation? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved. Number five, which is revised board policy 3320, general fund balance, and consider approval to move to full board for first reading, that is you, Mr. Pennington, again.
Okay, bal, or, policy 3320, which was sent to you, in paragraphs 1A, we simply had the wrong word in the policy, we caught it last year, I should have changed it earlier in the year, it fell through the cracks. Our goal is to maintain an unassigned general fund balance of 17 to 23% of the general fund and special education fund budgeted expenditures, the purpose of the unassigned portion of the general fund balance is to avoid cash flow borrowing, et cetera, that was always the intent, we just had the wrong word in the policy. Two years ago, I believe it was, the DPI revised the categories of fund balance from four items to five items, changed some of the words, we made this one change, but it was just an oversight that it said assigned rather than unassigned, so that is why we're coming to the board to ask for a revision in that policy.
Okay, uh, any questions?
And therefore Keith, for item B there, do we maintain that, because it'll cover there for our dental coverage in a sense, or do we need to address the fact that it sends the bucket, we no longer do anymore?
Well, since it just covered percentages and not dollars, I just thought it could just remain the same, it's 10%, but now it's 10% of a much smaller amount.
Does medical plan imply something besides dental, I'm not sure if we should clarify that too or not, or would that be important?
Um, since dental was included in medical plan, I didn't really think about changing it, in case we go back in three years or whatever.
Okay, and the same rules of thumb, hold for dental claims as due for health claims, that percentage probably makes sense to have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and that's, that's how we established the $100,000.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill. Uh, for president, okay, let's vote on it, those in favor, does anyone need it reread? I, I don't think we do, it's a policy change, so, uh, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, passes unanimously. That, four to zero. Um, okay, number six.
Number six is a administrative regulation change, which does not have to be approved by the board, but since we have so few changes to the business items, I wanted the committee to be updated and apprised of a different need, this is simply a change in an amount, this has not been revised since 2001, if you have the sheet in front of you, basically, number seven said, cash change amounts are authorized for the schools at $100 for each elementary school, and it did say $500 for each middle and high school, and that is not enough, and it probably hasn't been enough for three or four years, but we just saw it in the regulation and proposed changing it to $1,500, which is the amounts that were given to the secondary schools this year. They have a lot of money going in and out, and the 500, the $1,500 makes sense, and would be easily managed, and it probably was that much, the last year, we just didn't know the policy had this, or didn't review it, so this is just a change in policy.
So when I work in the volunteer booth at the concession stand at Parker, and the lady brings out her bag of money to put in a till to give people change, that's what this is covering, those kind of things, or just-
Yes.
But it's not just that, it's, it's-
It's also-
-a whole bunch of things.
And petty cash type items too. And they don't just give the whole bucket of $1,500 to somebody.
Good.
It's what, what is needed, but there's times, especially like at registration, or at some big-time tournament-type events, where there's going to be a lot of attendance and a lot of gate revenue.
Or you could have multiple activities going on at the same time.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, thank you.
Again, just information.
Questions, Greg? I had a suggestion after talking to Keith about it because these things kind of change, and we have an awful lot of different accounts. I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile allowing the CFO to make those decisions on how much should be in the accounts with, of course, proper oversight and that, instead of having to come to us. It's just a policy thing.
Who is the oversight?
Who would be the oversight?
Who's the proper oversight, so who would that be?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking the question for, and that, Greg?
He's just informing us of this. So he's just sharing the information with us. He already has that authority.
Does he? Or is he locked into those limits?
It's just in the policy, but it's still, we don't vote on it.
I know, I'm just seeing, is there an easier way to do it? That was all.
Easier than this, I've been telling you we're doing?
You want to have policies, there's checks and balances and regs to support policies. Otherwise, you're on a slippery slope, so.
Okay, okay.
This, this covers him as much as it covers anybody else because he's following guidelines of the board.
Okay. Just thoughts. And I'll always bring thoughts forward.
Be more loose on how we contract money.
Okay. But that's just discussion, so that's done. Okay, number seven. And I did present this one because several people had mentioned it to me. The way we report throughout the year, they might have some ideas of how to report a little bit differently. I'm not sure what that would be, but I think, Steve, you, you thought you, there was a couple of ways you'd like to see information presented, maybe earlier and more, more items, or did I misinterpret that?
No, I think that was, that was for, for board meetings that we received all the information, at least by the Friday before. That was Dale Thompson. The committee structures worked fine for me. We've gotten the information far enough in advance, so I'm happy with how this has gone. I can't think of any adjustments. I thought this was maybe talking about the time of day, but this time of day seems to be working fairly well for people.
Okay. Bill, any thoughts?
No, I'm, I've got no idea what this means, so.
Okay, no, somebody had something else in some other way, manner, or more things reported and that, that's what I felt we'd bring forward. Actually, a couple of board members did mention it, but they didn't document to me as I wanted.
I would share that when you're sending out the budget, ninety-page doctrine, that doesn't come with anything else, that that is a separate email with a separate attachment.
Mm-hmm.
One of the questions that board members have had is, are there ways to sort things? For instance, we don't need to get the minutes of the meeting with the board packet necessarily. The minutes could come as a separate item. The board action items could come as a separate item, so that's logistical thing. So we don't have a hundred and eighty-four-page packet
And duplicates.
Going through and it, yeah, so.
You have two sets of it, yeah?
That, that would be helpful. The budget book, I'm sure everyone would like separate so they can memorize it before the meeting.
You know, as you share that, as you share that, Steve, one of the questions that I, that I have is, we get the packets, but how much of that information is actually on a shared drive that we could go to and look at it on the drive rather than being emailed? Because that's another option. If that is the case, then I would just assume, go look at it there and then save whatever I need to my laptop or iPad or whatever.
And you're talking the entire board as much as, not just the finance committee?
We can pilot it, and then we can move it to the full board based on how it works for us.
Kevin, anything you've thought of? I guess I did add, have another little thought, but I'm not sure it'll fly, was I always liked it before, the first couple of years I was on the board, when it was kind of given to us in a little bit of a spreadsheet. The thing of that spreadsheet was to look at the forward happenings because of what we did, but today we're very restricted on it. So should we be looking at the list instead of, this is what we've done and what we've seen? I guess what I'm saying, should we have a certain, a number of accounts that would have, starting, when you start a budget, everything's the same as the year before, you assume. And from there, you clean it up, you change, add, or detract from it. So in, perhaps in a spreadsheet, this type of thing might be of value to people. I wouldn't mind it, but I know there are others that wouldn't like it. So that's why I threw it out there. Real easy to answer, we, and I go back through some of these. We're looking at these, these are major headings. We can add some in. I'm not looking at every item in the budget because it would be massive and allow Keith to kind of weed through this and do some different looks at it. And that's all, all the purpose of my, my thinking was on my part. I just listened to others, so.
I'm not sure how that varies from how we're receiving it now.
Well, I guess it allows me to do some things personally, but if I, if I need it, I guess I can just sit down and make my own spreadsheet and do it. So leave it at that.
I'm not understanding how, how that's different, how you, what you just...
Well, as one thing changes, we look at the bottom line change. And we can do it somewhat ourselves, some of the different things, plug-in things, so, as they come. But everyone seems to be happy, no suggestions other than what we had from Greg, so I will drop that subject.
I'm not happy.
Okay, so that, that basically is what the, we had the discussion. People, a couple of people that mentioned stuff didn't send me anything, so I can't do beyond that. Number eight. Future meetings and meeting times, are we staying comfortable with this, back to the third Tuesday at this time? Is there any adjustments anyone would desire or want to discuss? If not, I would suggest November seventeenth? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just going to say that, that the time and, and our timing is fine. I will miss some simply because of when they are.
Sure.
So, but by and large, I will make the majority of them, so I'm fine.
I'm counting. You're fine, Greg. Bill, are you okay with what we're doing? Okay, then we'll make it the seventeenth at three thirty. We'll schedule three thirty to five, and if we can get out earlier, we'll take it. Okay? Are there any other, any other items? Go ahead, Bill.
I'm not sure we're announcing other things come in. Two things. When you're a vendor, you can tell if a customer is doing things right with the things that you provide them. You can kind of get an opinion of the customer as far as how much they're taking advantage of the features or benefits or the product, et cetera. And I was at the Ford James event last week and bumped into Ryan, and they had really good things to say about the department. Who's the new finance person you're working with as well that you hired?
Either Jamie got promoted or Matt was...
How much who was? But they mentioned how much they're making implements of these new copier management programs that are saving a lot of money as far as paper use and et cetera. So just a good compliment to hear. My other thing is, the, make sure I say it carefully. The case that's being investigated that was in the paper, there are amounts being thrown around the community that are really out there. Because we can't say anything, I'm, no, no, that's, that's not, I'm sure it's nowhere near that, but I don't know the exact amounts, and then, plus I can't talk. We use something to at least quell the rumors that it's five hundred to a million dollars, thousand to a million bucks that was gone. So somehow, I don't know how we do that without, well, maybe we just did it, but at least let people know the dollar amounts aren't to that range. I know, we don't, the police are working on their investigations. We had to let them do that, but I'm just worried about the, the PR people jumping at numbers that are way out there.
I don't think we will know officially until they release charge, and then they will charge and then they will...
Okay, we can't release a ceiling type of thing, or it's, it's, okay?
They didn't have one to give.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll just have to deal with it, the rumors until that time. I just don't want attitudes to be affected by, the one number, it's like a fish. It gets bigger time you talk, tell the story.
The question is, how do we respond?
Yeah, I don't know.
When we hear these outrageous numbers and there's...
I don't know the number.
You can know what the number is.
Right.
Maybe you can say that back to the people. The district has talked, they're directly to the chief of police. They don't even have that number at this time.
Right.
And I would just call it like it is.
All right.
I've had the same questions asked of me, and I appreciate, Bill, what you brought up. I think it's important. I, all I have said to them, it isn't in our hands at this point, and the police department's in charge, and we have been given no figures or anything, but it has not affected any kind of things happening in the schools at this point. And this was just where I left it. So, and they understood. That wasn't it, it was just a question. Are there other things, for other agenda items we'd like to look at, or? Nothing? If there's nothing...